It's still thinking, I think. Okay, it's live.
Okay. All right. President Angel?
Here.
Amanda?
Here.
Marcus here and Clark Treasure?
I'm here.
Okay. We have a form. I pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Once again, we do have a form. We have the water utility operators' report. Adam is not here. He had a prior engagement. He said, "Do you want me to read this? Do you want me to, Kim?"
It doesn't matter. If you don't feel comfortable, I can.
I would prefer you read it.
Okay. Adam stated that everything thus far has gone smoothly with the work on the water tower. The company successfully blasted and removed all of the inside coat of coastal malin green sandal paint and has cleaned and primed the inside of the tank and riser pipe, which is the main pipe leading up to the tank. As of now, they've blasted most of the outside of the tank and legs of the dower, but have yet to blast the riser pipe. He was informed last week that the company had scheduled a vacation from August 18 through the 23rd. He expressed the urgency of having the inside of the tank up and operational ASAP due to not having any backup power. We are running one pump 24/7 with two pressure relief valves located in the system south of... the south end of Mulberry Street. There's also one on Section Street at the farthest point where it meets First Street. Adam's reached out to Darling Ingredients and they've advised that they have been fine with the pressure. There have not been any complaints or any issues on their side. Adam stated that the inside of the tank is looking much better as of now, even with just the primer coating. When he spoke with the man in charge of the job, he informed him that his best estimate time for the job to be completed is about two weeks from the crew's return date, 23, which again is a lot longer than we were told. The process is somewhat slow due to having to have the inside primer paint cure or dry properly before the next coat can be put on. When the last coat is on, it's estimated another seven to 10 day cure time will be required before water can be put back in. Also, the outside of the tank must be cured before water can be put in due to condensation. An estimated two days or less for the blasting of the outside. And he's sure that news will come as early to many due to the very high level of noise it produces. Defense and poles had to be taken down due to company's lift and access to the tower. As soon as they are done, Jimmy and Adam will put it back ASAP. He has also attached pictures to the email, which I really couldn't tell heads or tails from his pictures. He said, "Everything has been going smoothly. There's no new updates." Gallons used in July was 1,898,000 gallons. That's the end of Adam's report.
Okay, thank you.
Do you want me to continue since those are my comments?
Yes, ma'am.
We had a meter that was broken down Fourth Street. The customers are Eric Townsend. They've been cutting some trees and driving over the meter pit. The meter was broken. The riser was broken. Most of the setup was busted. He was able to replace it with some leftover parts we had whenever we replaced Billy Gibson's stuff. He kept all that, the leftover, where we had to change the height of all that. So he used that and he had to use a new meter. I spoke with the water customer and they agreed to pay that $200, so I put it on the bill.
Yes.
We still have a... not received the parts from Altech. I will email them again and ask them what the ETA is on receiving those. And that's it for the water utility. Unless there's any questions, I may be able to answer.
All right, I have one in regards to the broken glass on the meter. You made a comment about them dragging over it and taking trees down. So this is an over... over damaged?
It's the renters' damage. Eric said that he spoke with the renters and they've agreed to pay for the damage because it was their negligence. They intentionally did not care about damaging it. So they knew they did it. They knew they were gonna have to be responsible for it, so they were gonna pay for it.
Okay. Thank you. Under Old Business, do we have any report on the jail mowing or the tree or anything?
So I reached out to Rugby Hand for Hand's Lawn Care. Insurance paperwork from his company was mailed here. Kim advised that she did receive it. He's unsure as to what happened. He did state that he dropped the quote and everything in the box. So he will get that recopied and re-dropped off again. He does request that we put a start and a projected end date on that with a signature and then he can start. So I will check back in a week if you haven't received it.
He's talking about on mowing and keeping it up?
Correct, yes.
Refresh my memory, what was he doing?
Leaving the tree up.
I'm sorry, the mowing? What the previous... when he was doing the mowing of the jail lot? Was it once a week, every two weeks?
As needed.
As needed?
I think it was as needed?
It was every two weeks.
That's what I was thinking.
Didn't we approve as needed this time, though?
We approved every other week. His quote was for... his verbal quote was for tree cleanup and every other week. I've never received a written quote or a W-9, so I don't know where he put them. But they weren't in this box. Is there still a slot? No, the other one's been replaced. There's nowhere for him to put it.
Okay.
So I don't know. Unless it was sticking out and someone pulled it out.
And that, or... and I don't know that it was him. He may have had one of his workers do it and it didn't... it's still laying in the seats somewhere. I don't know. He said he would make sure he gets one here, though.
So he wants a starting end date? Start yesterday?
They stopped.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as possible. And I get...
I would have reached out to him. So I mean, if he really genuinely doesn't want to do it, then...
Right.
I don't think it's not that. It's just...
He has enough on his plate. He doesn't have to micromanage. He doesn't have time to...
Quit mowing when... first frost? After the first frost? You know, when do you quit mowing?
You could just put on your end of season. That would pretty much be adjusted.
Let's do that, let's see.
I can tell you when we stop... when Gary stopped mowing last year, if you...
Okay.
May open up 2024.
All right.
You're getting the... to be determined.
Yeah.
The last month of Gary mowed... he mowed one time in November. He mowed probably... once in October. Once in November.
We're not gonna stop right at the end of October.
This man's thinking.
He mowed twice in September. And we may be able to put that down and just say, you know, mow bi-weekly through... well, I mean, we're already in August.
I know.
We thought he'd been working on this for months. And I just haven't got a bill. I haven't been... had time to drive down there.
I would say at the end, end of October.
Bi-weekly through the end of October?
Yes. Kim, did you want to speak on the water rates and all this hassle you've been going through?
I finally got the rights... the right rates from Voice. The person that was assigned to work on this had to reach out to someone else to get them right. So this last billing was as accurate as it's going to get. We do not have hydrant set up as an additional utility, so it actually bills as a secondary water charge. If we do want it to bill as a separate utility, we'll have to pay for additional software.
And that's expensive.
So whenever I process bills, I have to run them through the printer twice to print the word hydrant... hydrant fee above other charge because it's not a separate utility. But other than that, all the rates work, so...
Good.
I'm ecstatic.
Yes.
It is not properly charging sales tax on it because it's not a separate utility, but our sales tax allowance typically covers the difference. So we're not really out any money. We're just not getting as much tax credit back for filing sales tax. So we're not losing any money.
Okay.
But we're not able to collect it. To this time, I mean, it was within pennies.
Okay.
So we're fine. Do you know when I'll be receiving a bill for the paving?
Should receive the bill by next month before the meeting. I reached out to him and... he will be contacting me when he can drop off the yellow slips and the paperwork, the bill and stuff like that.
Okay.
Because after he does that, then we have, you know, pay him and then we go. Then there's a report I have to make to end on all this.
Yes, and I believe any unused funds have to be returned in August. I can't remember what I did on that previously, but I know there's procedure for... returning unused funds if we have any.
Right. So no bill yet, but hopefully by September.
I haven't checked the mail today, but as of yesterday, Saturday, I still haven't received July's mosquito abatement bill.
Well...
So if I don't have it in the mail tonight, I'll try to make it up to call them tomorrow on my lunch break. Or if you want to.
I don't mind calling.
I'll check the mail before...
Okay.
Before I go home tonight. And then welcome to email me those bills.
Okay.
Because I'm not typically getting them until the second week of the month, anyway.
Do we have anything else under Old Business? What about the street you were talking about under Old Business, the Third Street?
That was new business.
Yeah, I thought we'd... okay. New business, you're all right. Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm getting the very bottom, right bottom. Six three. Hope Hatley had asked for an extension on her water bill. And she actually has already paid all of that last bill and this month's bill, so she's good. She's already paid her bill, Stu, the 25th.
Well, good.
But she didn't have the money on the fifth because of the way her husband's paycheck's fall. But she's already paid all of it and this next month, so...
That's good.
She's good to go. Budget workshop again on the... this Friday, so...
22nd at 2:30, correct?
Yes. I've already let my boss at work know that I'm going to be leaving at 1:30, 1:45, if possible, so I can be here on time. Typically, I leave early on Fridays, anyway, since... usually have my 40 hours and my lunch.
Before I forget, there's an SIDC meeting Wednesday at noon if anybody wants to go. I need to know so I can give him a head count for lunch.
I won't be available.
I know you won't.
I can't go.
What?
I can't go.
Okay, and...
I'm sorry, I was sitting there again.
It's Wednesday at noon. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
If we go back to the gravel thing, if we spray that, won't he be unhappy? I mean, what's our...
It basically goes down to two things. We either absolve it and give it back to the adjacent property owners or we have to maintain it, correct? That's around like two options. I mean, I understand that's probably gonna upset people, but I mean, it's... that is our only two options.
Do we know enough of where it lies to figure out if we wanted to have it paved? Because at some point, it curves and matches. Does it match?
Right, it technically ran into... it became Third and Union is what it became.
And...
And when the Holler used to have a bridge before we were even thought of.
And it's on my paperwork. Whenever I do the grants and things, that street is there. We just have to cover it.
So it... Union Street used to run where it currently is now across into what would be Joseph Henry's Drive, continued on through the Holler, came out behind, which would be my property and then behind Ed Cox's property on over into Second Street and continued down the alleyway down past Louise Zimmerman's old place.
You should... yeah. Right there?
Third Street then came across west off of Mulberry, through the Holler and connected into Union Street, which would then be the end of Joseph Henry's Drive. But Union...
Is the street... where the front should be a major deal. And is it uncorporated?
Correct. And then we located all of that at one time, Kim, when... we located that paperwork at one point, Kim, a couple of years ago, that you... Union Street behind Ed Cox and my property had been absolved, along with behind part of what it would have been Sipes at the time, but more...
It had been reasonably closed?
Yes, it had been closed. But Third Street is the only one that still continued and teed there and basically turned again.
So if I'm not mistaken, this says that Third Street's 65 feet wide?
That is correct. Wide and long?
Wide. So if we were to pave the 10 foot, 12 foot strip wide, there'd be a whole lot of room for, you know... there's... we should be able to... if we figure out where it actually is, it shouldn't be that hard because you've got your corner marked. So from your corner, there's 65 feet.
Where the sidewalk edge is... in front of Morris's house is basically the corner of the beginning of the street, which obviously, as the surveyor was pointing out, that approximately five foot of his corner of his garage is intruding onto the road. We don't maintain all of our roads at 65 foot wide, so I mean, not to mention, if we're going to do that, the town would have to take on the cost of filling in that Holler to make it...
Yeah.
To make it the full. So I mean, we're well within our property lines to just pave it, gravel it, whatever it is and the way it lays. We would still be well within our... our own property. And I don't care one way or another... and I don't think anyone else cares one way or another if it's re-gravelled or if we pave it. But for it to be grass and we're maintaining all the other roads, we really need to make a decision whether we maintain it or we absolve the road and split it in half and return it to the property owner, like we did. We're like, not that this council... this council did, but several councils ago when they did away with a couple others.
Where it comes out now is not actually Union Street. Doesn't it come out in between the Mendenhall and Joe Henry's...
Yes.
The Henry property?
Yes.
So, and that's not a legal alley. They just cut through it. That's not a legal alley.
So it only ends at the corner, then? And should have continued on through?
Right.
So is what he's created then, is that a personal... so what is that, then, that's going on between Mendenhall and Joseph Henry's?
That would technically be a private alley, private drive.
Mm-hmm.
Going through whose property?
Just depends on how it lies.
Okay, so it technically ends at the corner, then?
Right, whatever's going east and west is Third Street. Whatever's going north and south.
I can show you where my property line ends and what would have technically ended at... technically the corner of... what would have been Union and Third, that back corner of my property. I can show you where the corner is. So are you showing that Third Street runs straight back to that corner where it would have technically cornered with Union?
Yes, Third Street intersects with Union.
And we're still showing Third Street to Union as still corporate?
Yes.
So that runs all along the tree line behind me?
And then one thing to keep in mind, even though when these streets were planted, they weren't... some of them weren't developed, but they're sure they were planted, so that's something.
The town still kept...
Right.
Maintain ownership of the property?
Ownership, yes.
But they consider it undeveloped?
Yes.
Okay. Because we're not required to maintain a street to keep it. I mean, if we start leaving it undeveloped, we're not required to sign it over to the... to legally close it just because we're not maintaining it.
Then I'm fine with it being at grass, then. I mean, if we're... if we're... that was... I'm sorry, that was my misunderstanding. I thought that if we owned it, we had to maintain it. So if we don't have to maintain it, I'm fine with it being at this grass.
But he uses it?
But him.
Well, I'm pretty sure I thought he was sowing grass seed in it last time we got here.
Well, it was also reported, too, that they were using shopback to shop up the rock, too, and relocating it when it was laid.
Gee.
I didn't personally sell it. It was just reported to me. So that's hearsay, but... but yeah, if we're not required to maintain it, then I wouldn't waste any money for it.
Well, we don't maintain the adjacent part that comes off canal on the opposite side of...
Long Island.
And all that. I mean, it's still ours. There's still a street light out there. But as of right now, it's not developed. There's no houses down there. There's nothing there. There's no reason for us to...
It was never a road.
It was when Angel and Amanda and I were kids. It was a road because...
Are you talking Third Street now?
No, basically wrapping around behind the sample.
Oh, yes. Yes, you're right, yes.
It used to be a road because there were trailers back there.
Yeah, I remember, I've been on it.
There also was the alleyway that ran behind Lanny's pickets on over Sipes and behind and came out by the tavern on Second Street because we used to ride it. It was gravel. It's still partially there. The people that's in the trailer there on the corner of the highway and Second, they use it as a personal drive, but it's... used to be gravelled. And it used to be gravelled behind... between Davis and the bar, too.
Yeah, that's also a legal alley.
Yeah, that... we used to ride all of that all the way up to the post office. But we remember when we looked, the post office from here to the other road was never a...
Right, it's not a legal alley.
So, but it's all runs all the way through, even behind the old restaurant and all the way over to the ball court.
Right, it's still pretty private.
But the only part that I remember growing up that was gravelled was Fourth to Second, or no, Fourth to First. I remember being gravelled all the way through there.
Right. Now, I had Jimmy Blevins told me that he has an alley between... behind his house.
Yes.
But whatever I pull out the map, that's going to be in between...
It basically ran...
Broad and Mulberry, right?
That old alleyway used to run from Sixth Street behind the Metis, Passler's, on across Fifth, behind the church, Blevins, on into Townsend, across behind the water tower, on down to through York's, all the way over to Second Street.
According to the map, the alley starts behind the water tower. There's not a legal alley behind Townsend's or Blevins or any of that. There's not... Jimmy says he's pretty sure it's on his deed, but it's not reflected on our map.
Again, I think it's gonna be one of those situations where, like here, they just continued it on because it connected to one.
Jimmy says it's on his deed because he was having a dispute with the church.
Yes.
But I said, "If it's on your deed, that's one thing." I said that I'd have to look at my maps. I don't remember. And he said, "It's on my deed." I'm like, "Okay."
And it may be that it's not an alleyway as much as maybe it's a right of way. Because on my property... my property, that's not technically... we call it an alley, but between the two Cox properties that leads over to Second Street, we call it an alley, but that's deeded on me as a right of way through their yard to access the property where Danny Jackson lived.
Right, so that's...
He was considered landlocked, so he's guaranteed a legal access to his landlocked property.
He has an easement, huh?
Correct. So it's an easement, a right of way to use...
Right, it's not deeded.
The property is an easement.
Yeah, so... and that still shows on my paperwork and my deed that that's still an...
Easement.
An easement that I am still legally allowed to use to drive through.
Until you both property owners agree to dissolve it.
Right. So, but when most people talk, they call it an alleyway. So I wondered if that's not what's happening with Blevins is that maybe he's calling it an alley, but it was an easement that was in this...
Easement or right of way.
Correct.
Okay. Well, we have... if we have someone that wants to do some graveling projects, you know, we do have money appropriated for it. If we do, if we, you know... or we don't. I mean, whenever they paved Fifth Street, I think they used shovel gravel and made that little area that's in front of Joyce's old house look really nice. I think they did some work on it. It looks pretty good. So... you know, whatever you guys decide to do, there's money appropriated. If you guys want to... If you guys want to gravel and if you don't, then if you think it's just gonna be a waste of funds,
I think it would be a waste of funds to do that.
If the property owner's just going to sow grass seed and relocate gravel, then
Mm-hmm.
until we can actually decide to pave it and then we would only be able to pave the east and west portion, because the north-south portion is a private drive.
Correct. All right. Why I say not to waste the money for it?
Is there any other new business to come for this council?
Um, I have one, uh, there is missing, um, vinyl siding on the backside of the building here.
Can you say that again?
There is missing vinyl on the backside of the building here, on the backside of the fire side. It's been missing for a couple of months now. So I think we probably ought to address that before it creates some damage.
Where, has it showed up anywhere? Or it's been missing a long time?
I've not seen that line around.
It was probably one of the storms, then. Is it?
It's in the...
Oh, it's in the upper part?
Yeah. Maybe two or three panels worth.
We probably need to have that all replaced with, with metal.
If don't turn around, why haven't we placed vinyl siding?
Right, that's why the front of that's all new metal.
Mm-hmm.
That was one of the
Mm-hmm.
methods to the madness.
Yeah, pretty much.
Yeah, it's been...
And it's block on the other side, so the backside's the only thing that's still remaining as vinyl siding.
Can we get the person that did the other work to give us a quote, or we?
I would prefer not.
Done with him?
Hmm.
Well, I, I, and it is not the, prefer not, um, as much as he is not doing the construction anymore.
He's not available.
Yeah. Um, he helped out during the tornado relief in London, but, um, I believe he has bought a new business and is into some, doing something else.
Um, this would be, this would be a maintenance. So this is our all. Um...
Didn't need to turn it up.
So we would have access to contractual services and the general funds.
Repair and maintenance.
Repair and maintenance, we do have a thousand dollars appropriated for that.
You said for, uh, three sixty-one?
Hmm.
General, general three sixty-one. Um, also the contractual services fund, three twelve. That's where we pay mosquitoes spring out of. That's also a fund we can use for that contracted service.
Mm-hmm.
I know we had mentioned a few times about redoing the outside of this building. Is that something we just want to then, to do, is to metal the outside of this? When they get...
We already bought the paint for it.
I bought the paint for this and everything, it's just a matter of the weather cooperating.
Right, yeah.
It is something...
What's it raining this season?
Yeah, it's been something else to, uh, get a heat, pressure, pressure washed painted. Yeah, we thought, that tried to match the paint up as best possible. But, um...
Well, we currently have a thousand dollars in the general fund for repairs and maintenance. And then we also have additional funds to the contractual services if something happens. Let me see what we have for Riverboat. We have two thousand dollars for, in the three hundred fund for Riverboat,
Mm-hmm.
which we can also use for its three sixty-one repairs and maintenance.
Right.
So that makes three thousand there. And then we have a two thousand dollars in the four hundred, it's a four forty-one fund for, which would be a capital improvement.
Yeah, we always move that to the repair and maintenance.
Although adding siding would be a capital, would it not be a capital?
No, that's just a maintenance thing.
Okay. So right there's three thousand plus whatever room I have left over in that contractual services fund. And I think that'd be more than enough for what levels up there.
Do you have time to call two or three places?
Sure.
Okay, I would appreciate that.
Sure.
Um,
The more than I am.
The north side of the building, is that, is that vinyl too? Have we ever had any issues with it?
Actually, if you'll just excuse me a moment, I'll do a quick walk around.
Okay.
I think the north and south side of this roof. And it's the piece of the roof going in.
I don't think we've ever had any issue with the north side. Well, it's a little bit sheltered because of the post office.
That's the side we put our mini split on, I've decided to keep it clean.
Yes.
That is the only place in the back that is vinyl. Everything else we except the block before it gets to metal. So it would take seven, seven pieces of vinyl to fix that, but the board, um, the big boards, um...
So we'll need, definitely need plywood for that section.
Part of the board probably, isn't it? Instead of...
Yep.
Yep, yep.
And that's the only, everything else, um, is block all the way or metal. So that's the only section that is, you can buy all the metal.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So he is...
Put for metal.
Ask, ask for three quotes, sometimes you only get one, but anyway, it's just a small project.
My understanding was whenever they got to looking at the front, the people that did that did not put proper bracing behind it. So when they quoted, they're probably gonna need more than just a sheet of plywood and some metal, they're probably gonna need some two-by-fours to, to support it.
Hmm.
If it was done anyway like the front was.
Right.
Okay.
We'll not mention names here.
Okay.
And maybe, maybe you'll have something for the next meeting?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
I don't.
All right. I would entertain, anything, Kim?
Um, man...
Oh, I'm sorry, we need to find some minutes and...
Frame?
Frame, yeah. All right, uh, we've looked over the minutes, is there...
Wait, can we motion the, waive the reading?
Yeah, anything, motion waive the reading of the minutes, I'll, we'll through.
Agreed.
Second.
I'll second, I'll, I don't have any reading.
All right.
First, second, third.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to waive the reading of the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion?
No.
Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Angel. And I... And I entertain a motion to approve the accounts payable voucher.
Alright, okay.
Motion is seconded to approve this, uh, accounts payable voucher. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Any discussion?
No.
Motion carried. Okay, the next meeting, September the fourth?
No. Uh, yes.
Yes, yes, September the fourth.
We have a debate for Fred.
Hmm?
We have a debate for Fred, too. Does that have to be reported?
I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Does this have to be reported?
It'll be our regular meeting.
It's a regular meeting.
It's just a different day.
So that's our next meeting?
September.
September fourth.
September the fourth, it's our budget meeting, regular meeting and all that. And today is...
Why are we meeting on the twenty-second, huh? We aren't.
We are.
We have a workshop.
It's a workshop. Anyway, it's a workshop.
The twenty-second is my budget workshop.
Okay, let's, let's try this again. Uh, the next meeting is September the fourth. Gosh. Workshop at five, meeting at six, this is also a, uh, budget hearing.
It's the initial budget hearing.
Initial, I'm sorry. Man, what is the time?
Six forty-one.
Okay, time is six forty-one. I declare this meeting adjourned.
Who's motioning to adjourn?
Madam.
To adjourn, six forty-one.
I seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, we are adjourned.
What's the timer?